Like to say good evening to everyone. We now call to order the Copper River County Planning Commission November meeting. And we welcome you all here this evening. And we know that tomorrow is Veterans Day, so all the veterans that are in here today, and veterans everywhere, we want to acknowledge all of you and thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. And I know Mr. Price is because he invited me one time to the speak. Yes, 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 thank you, thank you. All right, now that we got that all taken care of, we will now have the approval of the agenda as the next item on the agenda. We've received those. Chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to move case U-2241-231-1 as the first piece of business after the approval of the minutes.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay, we will make that, we will note that. Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes from our October 11th meeting. And we received those and reviewed them. Any corrections, any concerns? If not, Chair entertain a motion to put it to record.
So moved.
Okay. Then probably move in second. We don't have to vote on that, and we will put the minutes into our records. Now, we will go to our first case, which would be the new business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case U-2241-23-1. It's a request by Generation Two LLC for a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a contractor's office and warehouse with storage, including truck and equipment parking per Articles 71A-2-3.5, 71A-2-3.6 of the zoning ordinance, and in accordance with Article 17, use permits of zoning ordinance. The use is located along the entrance corridor overlay district, and Article 30-3-2- or 2.2, excuse me, requires the proposed use to acquire a special use permit in accordance with this article as well. The property is owned LI Light Industrial and is located on Route 1529 James Madison Highway with a proposed entrance on Joan Drive, which is a private drive within the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 34, parcel five.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have this first case, which was your new business case for conditional use permit, as Neil mentioned, for outdoor storage. The property that we're looking at in question for that use is the red parcel on the screen right here. Just to kind of give you a general overview of where we are, Route 1529 is in the foreground of the property here. Beverly Ford Road, which goes back towards the airport, Copper River County Airport, is just off to the west here. And then this property will be served by Joan Drive, an extension of that for the development of that property here. The development is allowed by right as far as the office use is concerned. There is an element to the development that does require the conditional use permit, and it's why we're here tonight, and that's the outdoor storage component of their business. Just kind of gives you a general overview of the area. It's well suited for the actual proposed use for industrial office and/or storage. You can see some commercial greenhouse structures to the north, County Industrial Park here, just to the west and north. Southern States Facility, to give you a good landmark on the corner, is right here. The applicant proposes an office building, which you all convened at 6:00 PM as Architectural Review Board, and considered their landscaping and the architectural review of the actual building itself. The applicant does propose, as I mentioned, an outdoor storage component on the property in this general vicinity here, where they show some gravel area there to behind the building, to the north of the building. Staff provided the applicant's, not only the applicant's submission, but a staff report, which highlighted what they're proposing to do. One thing that we wanted to kind of point out with outdoor storage component, there is a landscaping plan that's part of the site plan. Site plan itself is being reviewed administratively because it is an industrial use, which is allowed by our code. But there are elements to the site plan here on the screen that help you with this outdoor storage use permit. The area that I wanted to point out is to the 29 side of the proposed development will remain, the vegetation that's here will remain, that will help provide a view shed barrier to the outdoor storage component. There is some additional landscaping that we've talked about with the Architecture Review Board that will now be potentially proposed here, which will also help with the outdoor screening component for the outdoor storage. And by and large, the component that screens it the best is the building that they propose themselves to build. As you can tell, the way they've lined the property up is most of the outdoor storage will be directly behind the building. Ms. Chairman, this is a little bit of a dual-purpose use permit. The code itself, which is the light industrial code in this case, does require a use permit. So does the architectural review standards. So this use permit is killing two birds with one stone tonight, and that's why it is referenced as one use permit case. But staff did recommend a couple of conditions for consideration for the planning commission, and really primarily to limit the area, as shown on the concept or site plan, to this area here. The applicant does retain and will potentially propose development here to the west, as you heard earlier. And then there's some areas here that they don't plan to make use of currently. So staff would prefer to have a condition limiting the area as proposed on the site plan now to the rear of the building or to the north of the building. The second condition is that we would prefer the commission-recommended condition to the board that the proposed use, as far as outdoor storage, not commence until Article 20, until our site plan is approved. And that's just so that we have the proper infrastructure to be able to service that use. And that's not an uncommon condition that we've placed on other use permits of this nature in the past. Ms. Chairman, I'm happy to entertain any questions. The applicant representative is here, and we do have the owner contingent is here as well that can answer questions. This is advertised as a public hearing, so we'll need to open that as well.
Thank you, Sam. The applicant representative for the applicant, if you would come forth and give your full name for the record, please.
Good evening. Darren Smith with Carter Run Consulting. I'm the civil engineer for the project. Sam explained this all very well, and both the conditions that he's proposed are fine with us on that. So any other questions I can answer for you, I'm glad to do.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Yes.
Sorry about a couple. Is there a mechanism or a system for managing the outdoor storage? If outdoor parking and storage of equipment and vehicles is done in an orderly fashion, then it looks, it looks fine, even if you can see it from outside the property, but if it's chaotic and haphazard, it can detract. So I was just wondering if you got a system for ensuring that the yard looks good and doesn't present an eyesore to anybody off-site?
Again, we can ask the owners if they have anything. I mean, I would just state that, I mean, for the most part, they're going to want to keep a yard that they can access and then be accessible and everything like that. So I don't think it's going to be helter-skelter. But again, we can talk to the owner about that if you'd like, and they can answer that if you'd like.
Well, I don't want to drag it out too much, but I mean, I would just hope that there's a, that there's a system in place, there's lanes established, or some kind of order that will be maintained there.
Yeah, it's going to be continually used. They're not, again, like they described a little bit during the ARB, a lot of their, you know, the equipment is going to be continually used and going on off-site. And so they're going to have lanes that they're going to be using and everything like that. How they delineate it and stuff like that, we really haven't shown on the plan, because that's a little bit more up to them once they get there and stuff like that. But yeah, I, again, without stipulating anything, I would say that they're definitely going to be an organization to this that's going to make sense for their business.
And one quick thing for staff, if I could. I think the applicant had asked to reduce the double row of trees on the north side, where there's a long distance from other properties and uses, to a single row. And I was just wondering if staff is okay with that.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Price, yes, staff is comfortable with that. As we kind of alluded to at the ARB meeting, just to the north, it is zoned agriculture, so the code does require that. And I do think that that modification is appropriate. Just to the north of that are commercial greenhouse structures that are industrial nature as well.
Okay. And I was also thinking about the right edge of the property, which as you head north, yeah, that there. So instead of two rows, one row, is that, is that where you wanted to reduce it?
No, that actually does have the double row along there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's just on that north side.
Okay, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else on this end? Nate?
Sorry, just to clarify, what is being stored? Is it unused vehicles? Is it extra materials? Is it pieces of equipment?
So, so again, as described in the ARB, it's mostly going to be vehicles, including automobiles, workers' vehicles, things like that, and some of the drilling equipment. There's not going to be a whole lot of storage. My understanding is there's not going to be a lot of equipment storage there. It's mostly going to be mobile types things that are moving in and out of there.
Okay. That's it. Right?
Question for Sam.
Go ahead.
Sam, when we did the ARB, the conditions from the ARB and these conditions, do they need to be the same, or does that, do they have to be the same, or?
They don't have to be the same, and these are very similar to what you saw with the ARB consideration. Just the ARB certificate of pertinence that you issued tonight does have conditions that will abide by those. That'll be enacted once the site plan is approved, and that will be the approval mechanism to make sure that those conditions are met through the site plan. With the use permit, it's a little bit different. That stands on its own to some degree because it is a specific use for outdoor storage. So it would not hurt to have those conditions reiterated for the specific use.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we now open a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair and come forth and give your full name for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission.
Good evening, sir.
First thing I would like to ask is, staff used two terms tonight. They said conditional use permit, and another staff member said special use permit. I would like some clarity on that. Is this application for a conditional use permit? Is it for a special use permit? Are all those words interchangeable? Is it one permit, or is it actually two permits? And if this application is for a conditional use permit, what exactly are the conditions that this permit is for? And what are the penalties for non-compliance? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Now declare the public hearing closed. Sam, would you like to comment on that?
Ms. Chairman, I'd be happy to. So there are, it's wrapped into one, the special use permit is specifically referencing Article 30 process, which is our entrance corridor overlay. This property is within a certain distance of Route 29, so that's required for outdoor storage. It all centers around that outdoor storage use. But when you open up the LI, which this property is owned, which is our light industrial, it also, too, requires a conditional use permit, is the wording that's used in that zoning section. Conditional use permits, special use permits in zoning order are used interchangeably. Our code uses both terms. And this process is the same for both that process. So it is a dual permit, a singular process.
Okay.
But it's all centered around one particular use, and that's outdoor storage component. And the conditions are enforced like any other conditional use permit that we have, and that there's, there are penalties associated in a zoning violation process that we go through, which is Article 23 of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Any other discussion? Any questions for staff? Being on the chair, entertain a motion.
Make a motion? I'd like to make a-
If you're going to help.
I move that we send this to the Board of Supervisors with approval for case number U-2241-23-1, request by Generation Two, for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of the, and operation of the contractor's warehouse and office with outdoor storage. And then also to include in this motion, the entrance corridor requirement to have, to require a special use permit in accordance with Article 30.
Okay.
Oh, with the two conditions that staff has recommended, and that be limited, the proposed use of the outdoor storage shall be limited to areas as depicted as gravel, not including the gravel area that is proposed in front of the building, as shown on the generalized development plan dated August 8, 2023, by Carter Run Consulting and submitted by applicant. And number two would be the proposed use shall not commence operations until a site plan in accordance with Article 20 of the zoning ordinance has been approved. And the storage of inoperable or junk vehicles shall be prohibited.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very well covered. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Being on all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay, we will send it forward with, your application forward with recommendation of approval. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. That includes our new business. And now we revert back to our old business, okay, at this time. Thank you, Neil.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we'll give them, we'll give them time to-
Yes, sir.
-move out. You all don't want to stay? You could stay, it's fine. We're going to have popcorn later. You all take care, have a nice evening. Thank you, Neil.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case Z-45923-1, a request by CLO Digital Infrastructure LLC by Robert Book to rezone 120.85 acres from RA, rural area, to LI Light Industrial. The applicant is proposing to use the property for a data center campus per Article 71A-2-2.5, including an area for electrical substation and associated equipment. The property is located along 1529 James Madison Highway in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 41, parcels 107, 109, 110, and 110A. The Planning Commission will consider, review, and make findings whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed substation are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan, or part thereof, in accordance with the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, Section 15.22232. The Planning Commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to approval or disapproval of this rezoning.
Ms. Chairman, commission- Familiar to you, very familiar to you, just saw it a couple months ago. It's your September regular planning commission. As Neil mentioned, it is a rezoning request that we're looking at to light industrial, specifically for the use of data center campus on this property. On the screen highlights the property that's seeking to be rezoned in red. The applicant has, after receiving comments from the public, from the Planning Commission, and from staff, from their September and their previous submittal, have gone back and revised their application package, produced a new narrative responding to concerns and comments that the Planning Commission had at your September meeting. The applicant has also supplied the Planning Commission and ultimately the Board consideration of a proffer statement, and that proffer statement is dated October 26. The revised Planning Commission package material did include that narrative statement, which included new renderings that the applicant has submitted, as well as that proffer statement. If you look at the narrative specifically, and I'm not going to dive into that whole narrative, but I did want to point out that the applicant and did show in italics the changes, or the response to comments that they received in that application narrative. And that's what I hope the Planning Commission was able to focus on when you were reviewing the new material. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the changes that we did have in that application. There was a revised rezoning plan or concept plan that did show the relocation of the generation equipment, the backup generation equipment away from Route 667, which is Nollsmill Road, to the front of the property there, was relocated to the side and the rear of the buildings. The applicant provided a permit review for construction table, basically illustrates all the forthcoming reviews and analysis that they still need to do, even if their rezoning is approved ultimately by the Board. The applicant provided that plan, rezoning plan, which more fully delineates wetlands and floodplain area on the property. And I'm going to skip, skip ahead to the concept plan of the applicant has submitted. This is the latest plan, and it does more clearly show, not only on this, but on other documents as well, the floodplain area and the wetlands area on that plan. The applicant provided a schematic site plan, which illustrates that the property can be served by public utilities, water and sewer. The applicant also, at this point, has provided a letter from the town of Culpeper, which states there is adequate water and sewer treatment capacity to serve this proposed development. The applicant provided a Phase One environmental site assessment, which is dated and was submitted in your package dated October 18. The results of the site assessment will be helpful with any forthcoming site plan ultimately if the rezoning is approved. But there was nothing in the assessment, as far as staff was concerned, or the consultant that provided the assessment, that would restrict or prohibit the proposed development from moving forward. The applicant provided a letter from Rappahannock Electric Cooperative that shares that REC will be the electric utility provider for this property, and they're collaborating with Dominion as far as transmission to analyze the best way to support their load request for this property. When you do a deeper dive into the revised proffer statement, Ms. Chairman, there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the Planning Commission's attention that are changes. The statement more clearly specifies proposed tree heights, and that's related to the berming and landscaping that they're proposing primarily along Route 667, again, which is Nollsmill Road to the front of the development. The applicant does proffer monetary donations in support of the Copper River Farm Tour program, Copper River 4H. The applicant also provides a one-time payment to the Copper River County Fire and Rescue Association, which is based on square footage of the proposed development, and is similar to other developments of this nature that we've seen here recently. The applicant proposes a one-time monetary donation to Bode's Managed Community College, as well as a Copper River Technical, excuse me, CTEC for short, Copper River Technical Education Center. And the applicant plans to work with the subcontractor, some contractors to facilitate local engagement for career development. The applicant has clarified their intent to limit the sound at the property line below the 60 decibel level for normal operation, up to 70 decibels for emergency equipment usage. The applicant has limited their traffic usage with a commitment to provide additional traffic studies if the usage goes beyond the anticipated traffic numbers that they provide to VDOT to date for this particular use. The applicant has clarified their intent to reserve and dedicate additional needed right-of-way up to 40 feet along Route 667, Nollsmill Road. The applicant proffers to complete a pre-construction and post-construction analysis of the roads, access roads to the site. That'll be done prior to any land disturbance or building permits as part of this process or construction process. The applicant also proffered to provide additional escrow funds up to $300,000 towards any additional road improvements that may be needed in the future related to the project or background traffic that may need, for example, right now, the applicant proposes right-turn lane, or potentially right-turn lane for their main entrance, but not a left-turn lane because it's not warranted per VDOT standards today. So that, but that may be needed in the future if and when the development happens, or any development near this property were to happen. Staff is supportive, Ms. Chairman, of the latest revisions to the application, specifically the proffer statement that the applicant has tendered. And staff does recommend the Planning Commission move this forward to the Board with recommendation of approval with acceptance of those proffers. I just wanted to note, before I stop talking, there's two findings that the Planning Commission does need to find as a reminder. One is a substantial accord finding in relation to the substation, and that is, that's a necessary part of the project, but because it is a utility, it does have a special designation for land use in the state, for the state code. So there is a substantial accord finding that needs to happen, that the Planning Commission is charged to find, that'll go along with this property. The applicant has identified that area where the proposed substation would be for this project, and this area here, basically to the, to the west of the development, excuse, yeah, to the west of the development there, southwest of the development. The second finding is a normal finding that you're used to making for any rezoning for the Board of Supervisors, is a recommendation of whether the zoning should be approved or not. And, Ms. Chairman, the applicant and representatives are here tonight. Again, I don't think they have a planned presentation tonight, but we do have pieces of the application that we can display on the screen if we need to. But also in front of you tonight is basically the same thing that you received a couple weeks ago, that we can reference to if we need to, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
We did have a public hearing, Ms. Chairman, as you recall, in September that was opened and closed. So we did not advertise for this as a subsequent public hearing, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Sam. Is the applicant or representative for the applicant here? If you would, come forth and give your name for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission.
Good evening. Anything that you would like to add or say?
No, I think everything is really summarized, tried to make it easily digestible. There's a page here, responses to Planning Commission, that summarizes all of the material changes and kind of cross-references things for you. If there's any additional questions or clarifications I could provide, happy to do so, but want to be efficient with you all the time.
Okay. So anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Would you all consider revising the proffer statement? It is 1G. The applicant will make a one-time donation of $25,000 to Culpeper County to be divided equally. Take out the Culpeper Farm Tour program and put the county FFA chapters. That's what we had discussed last time and proposed, and the Copper River 4H, because those are the two programs that are educating the next generation of agriculture producers in the county, not the Culpeper Farm Tour.
Absolutely, would, happy to consider it. We're also in discussions with local constituencies about adding a proffer around the PDR program.
The what?
The PDR program. I'm going to butcher this, so excuse me, but it's essentially a program that pays farmers to not develop their land. It's a new program, but we're, I understand it's still early innings, so it's not included in these proffers. It's something we are considering before we go to the Board next month.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, excuse me, was that it?
Well, the other question I have is for staff. So at this point, we're at the point that we have to make a decision on this tonight, correct?
Yeah, without- Left my mic off. Without further agreement from the applicant, yes.
Okay. Because I guess my concern is reading this letter from REC, collaborating and studying the best way to support the requested 300-megawatt load. The study assesses the need for infrastructure upgrades, likely transmission routing to minimize community impact, but that's no guarantee that this potentially could cause some people to lose land because of having to upgrade lines and make bigger lines and structures, correct?
I couldn't fully answer that question. The, how the property will be handled will be, it'll certainly be electrified by a substation here, will require transmission as well. Dominion is working and responsible for that part of it. Dominion, as they stated before, a couple months ago to the Board of Supervisors, they are working on an upgrade now. From what we understand, that may not accomplish everything if everything were to be built that is on the table today. So additional transmission work may be needed, and I don't know that the applicant's prepared to be able to share any more than, than they can on that at this point, or staff.
And that's not something that we could condition, right?
No, and ultimately, in staff's opinion, if they can't get the power, or can't acquire the power, or Dominion can't provide it, they can't build the project as they provided, so.
And this would just be for this, if approved, right? This is tied just to this company for this project, so it cannot be transferred?
Yes, ma'am. The applicant did, and has limited themselves to this particular use for the property. If the rezoning is accepted in this way that they proposed in the proffer statement that goes with it, to do anything different than the data center complex that they're proposing now, someone would need to come back and basically revise the proffers at that point. that point.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thanks. This is for staff. Sam, so I'm aware that the town provided a letter stating that they could supply water to the project. I'm also just wondering if the town staff is aware of the, the concept plan and has had an opportunity to comment or consider how this plan will impact development of the town well site that's somewhere here on the property, because they would have to have the necessary easements. They may have concerns about fuel storage for the generators and so has, has the town been, been brought into that and been provided the opportunity to say anything about it?
Yes, the town's reviewed everything that the applicant has submitted. We've submitted everything that each time to the town. The town provided that last letter for capacity. As a property, if the zoning is ultimately approved, it would need a site plan. And that site plan would get into their details of where that well site is, how it would be protected, how it would work around the existing facilities that are there today and anything that's planned. And of course, that's gonna take into consideration development really outside of their, outside of their scope of authority too, but the town will have to consider that for future site plan.
And one final thing for Sam. So if the Alexander project is approved across the way, so and the plan is to align the streets and so we end up with an intersection there. I think I noted that DDOT didn't have any plans to do anything at that spot, but would, I mean, could the county do something to regulate that intersection? Because you potentially have a lot of construction traffic on both sides going in and out.
Sure. Yeah, and, and it's probably too early to tell officially where we are with either development at this point, but yeah, ideally if this rezoning were to go through and anything across Knolls Mill were to be approved, we wanted to line those entrances up. And at that point, we would have to evaluate the traffic that's being generated not only from this property, but from this property and figure out what type of turn lanes may or may not be needed. But that would have to be done with any future site plan work or rezoning work across the street that is ongoing now.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yes, do you have?
So I guess if I summarize and I try to analyze everything that we've heard about this, it seems like it's in the right location for such a proposed use. And the only thing that if you ever sell it or someone else takes it over, they have to come back to us because the only use that can be on it is a data center. That's how I understand it. Am I correct, staff?
Yeah, the way I understand the proffer, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I think that you're addressing our issues from before makes it a little bit more palatable. But I think the bottom line is gonna be if you can't get power, it's a no-go. All right? So we don't have a whole lot of comfort level from the Rappahannock letter, but I think you realize too, if you can't get power there, you're, and you're making a big step forward assuming you will get power and that the power companies want to provide it. So I, I think that, I don't have any more questions for it. The other issue will be water. And if you're gonna have any kind of fire suppression that requires water and your fuel storage for your, your generators, those are all things in the site plan. If you don't have them, you're not gonna operate. So I don't know what else we can do to feel more comfortable this evening, but I can't think of anything else that I have. And I, I would also encourage you to make sure that the FFA and the 4H programs are funded because the farm tour has got nothing to do with educating kids. It's for the general public and it's more of an entertainment thing. So I, I do agree with that. But that's kind of all that I have to say when I sit back and look at the big picture. Thank you.
I wanna clear up something in my mind. We keep talking about, I keep hearing people talk about cooling water and so forth. You are not gonna use water to cool the data center, is that correct?
It is a water glycol mix that does not require any water from the town or county. The water is trucked in pre-mix one time to charge the system and that's it.
Okay. And, and so appreciate that. I guess my bottom line on this is, and last time we did this, I had two major sticking points. One was the power. My concern on the power is we don't know that there's enough power there. We don't know if, if we need new lines, if they can go on the poles that are in place on the current right-of-way, or whether we need new poles on a different right-of-way. And we still don't know that. So in, in my perspective, we're not planning here, we're hoping that that's, that we don't have those issues. So I, and again, that, that's just something that, that really, I don't think we can, I can't personally go forward on. The other one is the, the fire truck support. I appreciate the, the proffers that you, you revise a lot of the proffers and you put some, some money in there for the fire truck, you know, I think a 23 cents per square foot. But, and maybe my concern here is more to the board of supervisors than it is to you. But, but again, I'm very uncomfortable with, we've, we've got about four or five data centers that have been approved. These are big buildings. We've got one truck that can, that is a ladder of over 100, that'll take us up to 100 feet. So we're kinda saying, we're hoping that we don't have a situation where this one truck's not already dedicated when we need it to address one of these buildings. I, I think this is a doable do. I mean, you, you can contribute some money. I understand there's gonna be tax money later. I, I guess my, my question is to the board of supervisors, is why can't we fund a new truck before we go forward with these data centers and then repay the, the budget, if you will, when the tax money becomes available? It just seems like we're, like, in my perspective anyway, we're taking a big risk on that. And the last, last comment I'll make is the backup power of the, of the generators. Your, your sole intent is to use those just as backup power. We're not gonna try to bring them on to help the grid when it starts crashing in the middle of the summer or anything. Is that correct?
The intent is to have them for backup power. The way that the PJM tariffs rule, et cetera, is that PJM can load shed. They're gonna load shed industrial loads before they turn people and hospitals off. So there is a, a chance where you would need to run the generators in a load shed event to support the grid, but it's not, they will never be run to support the grid for economic purposes.
Okay. Okay, I guess those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bird?
I'll just comment that I, I find your request in substantial accord with comp plan. You fit the technology zone. You, you match future land use plan. I'd say it's, it's the right use in the right place. So I can support a vote tonight to recommend approval.
Nate?
Couple of questions. Proffers, and, and this isn't just directly, thank you for all the proffers that you've, that you've put into this and more for either staff or either our county attorney. Is there, when do we get the proffers? Is that day one? Is that day 30? Is it day 330? And then two, if proffers are not given, is there a recourse? Is there any kind of repercussion if a proffer's not given? It's, it's well intended, I get it. And I'm not misjudging you and say you won't, but is there?
Yeah, so, so, so that's a, there's a couple of answers to that, because there's a couple of questions wrapped in there. But the, the first part as far as timing, when the board, if the board approves the zoning accepts the proffer statement, it's tied to that zoning right then and there. So it's tied to that property, it's specific when they make the vote. As far as triggers, as far as like the cash, the monetary donations or, or infrastructure improvements, those are typically timed triggers that are built into each statement. So for example, the payment for the emergency services or for Culpeper County Fire and Rescue, I believe, is probably at the occupancy permit at 23 cents per square foot. So that's your time trigger. And it may not be, I'll have to double check that, but there's certain time triggers that are put in for certain things. Outside of the proffer statement, you know, you have your site plan which will also have time triggers. As far as enforceability, if there's something in the zoning, it's enforced like any other zoning violation at that point because it's tied to that property specific to this zoning for light industrial for this use. So if they don't abide by that proffer, it can become a zoning violation for that property.
And, and does a zoning violation stop construction, stop use, stop occupancy?
Depending on the proffer and, and the, the violation, yes, it could, potentially.
Say if they miss a payment to, you know, an FFA or is that, do we?
Yeah.
Do we have a scale that says?
For example, we don't issue a building permit, you know, until we have that. Or we don't issue the land disturbance permit until we have that, or the occupancy permit until we have that. And then if we don't get it and there's not a time trigger, then it becomes a zoning violation that we enforce at that time, so.
Okay. And then last question I have for you, it's a two-part. Is this cleared information being stored on this facility classified?
Don't have, don't have a tenant yet because I'm not rezoned to acquire a tenant.
Is that the intention to go after military-grade information or is it just, are you going for backing up all my text messages on my cell phone?
So it's, it's a good question. So one of the attributes of Culpeper is that it has a legacy with the Federal Reserve, et cetera. There's a lot of, you know, clandestine fiber that's not on any map that runs through your county. There's a scenario where the highest and best use for our land is to put something that has some government affiliation with it, but the base case is to go try to attract commercial tenants. And they're not really gonna be storing your text messages as much as doing like high-level compute. So solving really complex problems or making, facilitating like inferences and machine learning to improve autonomous vehicles, for instance.
So, and that would leave my question to, so that's gonna leave that facility probably more to the penetration testing or hacking, which then offend, affects our surrounding community because of whatever could go wrong with that is gonna bleed over into our county because I'm sure they're gonna wanna shut certain things down, make sure you don't have generators, make sure you don't have EMS, make sure you don't have fire to respond. That opens us up to some level of threat. How, how do we work with you to, to make sure that it's not gonna be an issue in our county?
Yeah, that, that's also a great question. So the, the restrictions that the federal government would put on what is known as like a hardened site would be far more substantial than, than, you know, what we're talking about here right now. It wouldn't change any of the site plan per se, but the fencing, et cetera, would all be next level. The guard shack would probably be a little bigger. Again, that's not Plan A by any means. The, the regular way sort of data center fencing is heavy-duty stuff. It's not chain link fence that kids are gonna take a bolt cutter to and go hop the fence and play in the detention ponds. It, the, you know, the, really the best in-class fencing, best-in-class sort of security measures are all based into the site plan. They're based into the buffers between the edge of the property and the buildings. They're based into the fact that we have two entry and exits. The way everything's sort of set off of the floodplain, we've, as far as where we are today in the, in the process, we've taken all the precautions we can.
And I lied, I have one more question. REC, we've all asked the question, REC, is it enough power? Is Dominion gonna supply? Is REC gonna work? What have they told you?
So our conversations with REC is that we're gonna connect to that substation. It's just, as you look at this picture in front of you, it'd be like over the north, the top left portion of where the substation is. It's a short radial. That's the best-case scenario because it falls within the less than .5 jurisdiction. It makes it the least amount of red tape to go through. That's the informal most likelihood, looking at it on a map, sort of sanity test. Part of why we like this site is because we looked at power flows in the area and that site makes sense. You know, just to comment generally on power, the, the planning commission, the board supervisors, the economic development folks have done a really good job of concentrating all of your load in one area. The sooner you kinda close, you get all of the, the animals in the barn and close the doors behind them, the easier it is for Dominion to plan. So if this is part of the long-term view for this property, which it is in the comprehensive plan and it is in the technology zone, the sooner it, it is approved to move forward, the faster uncertainty is removed. And it'll allow Dominion and Rappahannock to plan comprehensively. Whereas if we wait four or five years and they've planned comprehensively for the other load that's been approved and now we're adding new load, that's where things are gonna get hairy. So I think while I can't say up here for certain that that's where we're gonna interconnect because I can't, and Dominion's never gonna tell you they're not gonna build a new line because they're in the business of building lines, I think it's the most logical place as I sit here today, based on what I know about how power works. And the sooner that we can de-risk the opportunity, the sooner we can get tenants, the sooner we can get, you know, our load request is already in front of Rappahannock, we've paid the deposit, but the sooner we can put more concrete planning into that load request, the faster we get power, the more the uncertainty is cleared quicker.
So if that ideal location isn't available, what's Plan B?
It would be similarly on that line, but, but probably just a little further north of it, so just before it terminates in that substation. And that's, that's sort of what I know based on how it works.
Are we dealing with the right-of-way issues or?
Uh, no. It'd still be, can't say for certain, but I'm fairly confident that the existing, like if we go to that lower, lowest hanging fruit, it would be no right-of-way issues because we'd just be crossing our wetlands and then a small piece of what's now Cloud HQ. If we had to go a little north, I think we might need an easement across the water treatment plant. But it, it would be within the county's control or the town's control.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick one for staff. Hey, Sam, given the fact that this is right next to 29, there's gonna be a substation there very close to 29, will we at some point have to reconvene as an ARB for a certificate of appropriateness for this?
I, I would have to look at the ordinance to determine that, but I'm not sure utilities are required to do an ARB review. I don't think that they're subjected to that. And the substantial accord finding is important part of this process now because that determines the location. That's part of that.
Thank you.
The technology zone does require an ARB review for the building itself, and we mentioned that last time. I would have to double check though on the substation, we're part of that review, so.
Okay. And I was just thinking the substation is a part of the overall thing. Even if you, even if you exclude the substation, you've still got three large buildings there next to 29.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Sam, several questions have come up about if they would, did not get power. But that's not an issue because from a fiduciary duty, Dominion or Rappahannock has to provide power to them. And that's state and all that that requires that. So they can't deny them and they can't say, I'm not gonna give it to you. If it comes through there, it's the fiduciary duty of the electric company to put it there, so, or to provide power to them. So I just was hearing that and I just wanted to make sure that, so it doesn't matter if Dominion or Rappahannock or whoever it is.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you're 100% correct on that. The challenge is always rely on how you're gonna get it there, right?
That's right. That's the question.
And I think to Mr. Book's credit, he's, he's captured probably the best way to look at it is we've tried to consolidate these areas. The board did so even more so last night with the revisions to the tech zones to try to make this our area. And with that being our area, right, for development, it will help Dominion, REC to, to have better planning on how to serve it, so.
Right. Okay. All right. At this time, we now open a public hearing?
You, you opened and closed it in September.
I thought you said we just didn't advertise.
We didn't advertise for a public hearing for tonight. We did not advertise.
We did not advertise.
And we opened, you opened and closed the public hearing in September.
Yes. So we don't have to go through that. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Any questions, anything for the board? Okay. If not, the chair entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z459-23-1, finding that the request by CLO Digital Infrastructure LLC to rezone tax map parcels 41, 41, 107, 109, and 110A from A1 to Light Industrial, to be in substantial accord with the comp plan as it specifically, as it relates to the proposed construction of an electrical substation. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the rezoning for digital infrastructure development with the acceptance of revised proffer statement dated. And staff, am I correct? That's November 9th or October 23?
I believe the actual proffer statement was October 26 or 27.
I believe the actual proffer statement was October 26, or?
26.
Yeah, October 26.
26, yes.
October 26, 2023. Period.
How about the 4H and the revised proffer, removing the Farm Tour and adding?
Okay. With, with the revised proffer, removing the Farm Tour as being funded and equally dividing funds between 4H and FFA.
Second.
Been probably moved to second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Got that, Morgan?
Did that take care of both things we had to do?
No.
Because you said we had, approved the application was in there, and substantial accord. Both are in there.
Commissioner Burton included both actions in his motion.
Okay. Good, good, good. All right. The chair would send it forward with a recommendation of approval. Okay? All right. Okay. Sam, do you have anything else?
No, Ms. Chairman, we don't have anything else. We will hopefully have a meeting in December. I know you're looking forward to that, but we do have a couple of items that will be on our agenda that second Wednesday.
You've got to bring the Christmas game. And none of us have to bring Christmas games. Ray take care of that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we know that you skipped Halloween. We know. Okay. All right. We have, no other business? Katie, you want to?
Move adjourn.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Meeting is adjourned.